Welcome and good evening everyone to our public hearing tonight. My name is Ryan Blazek, I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division and I'll be assisting to moderate a public hearing tonight. And this is a public hearing for a permit application for proposed boardwalk and platforms in wetlands and Manistee Lake Edge. Before we get started and pass it over to the our other Eagle staff who are on the line tonight, I just have a couple logistical things to go through. Just going through a quick introduction here. And then the but the important thing to know is that there's actually two parts to the public hearing tonight. There is a public informational session that we're going to start off with, that's the first part, so there'll be about a 10 minute. Presentation with information on the project and background, followed by question and answer session. And then the second part is actually going to be the public hearing portion of the hearing tonight, so that'll be where everyone will have an opportunity to make an official comment for the record. On this proposed project, and so everybody will have an opportunity to do that. And then we'll just go through other ways to make a comments and who to contact with further questions. For those of you not familiar with the Zoom platform that we're using tonight, all lines are going to be muted, so we won't be able to hear you, but you can hear us. But we will, if you have a question during the question and answer session, you can either type your question in the Zoom toolbar. And submit those anytime, or you can raise your virtual hand in Zoom and when we go through the question and answer portion. When we start that, we'll go through some more details on that. And also just let everybody know, we are recording this public hearing tonight. It will be on our YouTube channel in a few days, so you'll be able to view it again at that time if you'd like. So with that, I would like to invite Aaron Emmington and Joe Haas to go ahead and introduce themselves and go ahead and get started.
Hi, good evening, I'm Joe Haas, I'm the hearings, I'll be serving as a hearings officer this evening. I'm also the Water Resource Division District Supervisor between the Cadillac and the Gaylor District Offices. Appreciate you being here and attending the hearing.
Hi, I'm Erin Emmington, I work in the Gaylor District Office as an environmental quality analyst. I'm the EQA processing this permit application.
Thanks Erin.
Yep, so Joe, I believe you're going to be giving the presentation, so you can go ahead and take that off when you're ready, just let me know when you want to change slides and I'll change it for you.
Yeah, we'll do that. So this is a proposed project for the property owners Bryce and Susan Metcalf, also Forest Recreation LLC, known as the property owners here. Go to the next slide if you can, Ryan. Generally, starting the the presentation here, just looking at the location from a 10,000 foot view, if you will. The site is the yellow pin in the middle marked site, just to the northeast of the village of Calcasca. On the north edge of Manistee Lake, go ahead and to the next slide. So zooming in a little bit farther here, you get a little better sense for the for the site presuming. Most people here probably have some familiarity with the location, but I just want to be sure. Everybody knows the locations that we're talking about and the nature of the geography here. So this is that the darkened area at the north. Of the lake is generally generally defines the wetland that we're. That comes under Part 303 regulation and we'll talk about that in a little bit. Go ahead to the next side slide, Ryan. So this is a copy of an image from the state's wetlands map viewer, and you see it includes the whole of Manistee Lake. But really what we're concerned with is the the little light blue circle and the area to the north there, just south of the Cold Springs Township. Title that's along the roadway there, so that's generally the area of regulated wetland. We haven't done a formal wetland delineation out here, but this is material that is provided through high altitude aerial photography combined with. Soil surveys and Michigan resource inventory maps and is a good indicator of where you would expect to find wetlands. It may not show every wetland on the landscape. And and very likely does not show all the wetlands that are there, but it does show a good sense for what is most likely wetlands on that property. Next slide, Ryan, please. And so this is, we're getting now into the material that was provided. As part of their application and and that we developed as far as looking more into the actual location of the site and the parcel split, so the. The project is is located again on the north end of Manistee Lake. And it's, I don't know, it almost looks to me like this, the shape of the. The state of Illinois or something maybe, but roughly, but it's the the two dots really indicate the areas of of. Of proposed work in general, and you can kind of see if you look harder and a little deeper at this map. The darker shaded area that is the wetland that's sort of underlaying this this township map. That is the wetland itself, right? So there's the the red dot at the top and that's that'll be referred to as the northern. Area of of proposed wetland impact. And then the dot that's down at the lake's edge or closer to the lake's edge, and that'll be the southern, the southern part of. Of the of the proposed area for permitting. You gotta excuse me for a second, I gotta let the dog out of the room. Next slide, Ryan, please. Sorry guys, I knew that might be a problem. And so again, here's the the parcel map of the northern Lake Manistee. And it it shows the the ownerships and the again, the dark shaded areas generally the. The mixed conifer forest forested wetland that we find here. Just again, to give you a sense of property ownership and boundaries and the topography out here. So next slide, Ryan. Now these are the plans that were provided. We don't require engineered plans, these work for this project, I think in general, we might ask. For additional information, but. Really, it's not a requirement that, you know, we get to have an engineered stamped plan for every project, something of a product of of this nature is is. Pretty straightforward engineering wise, where it's it's a boardwalk construction. I think the property, the project proponent, the property owner here is proposing to do the work themselves, that's that's perfectly allowable. Reasonable and might make the best sense actually up here, but the so this would be the northern. Parcel, the northern portion on the one of the previous slides, it would have been that northernmost red dot, so. There's a wetland that's that's roughly delineated or drawn on here. From the center and then tapering off to the to the right and to the to the east. Where it gets a little bit wider with the divides or splits this parcel. With uplands at the northeast and the southwest or the western part of it. This shows approximately 370 feet of elevated boardwalk to be constructed. With I think the purpose is just to allow access across that wetland to either uplands on either side. And at the bottom, there's a small cross section that shows the 370 feet of the elevated boardwalk. And just trying to get people a minute to look at these. And not not rush through it too too quickly for folks. So next slide, if you can, Ryan, please. And then this would be the other area that's proposed. For some wetland impact with boardwalk and a deck or a platform. So this is how we, this is what we've described as the southern area of work. A lot, a lot more detail or more going on with this drawing, but the the gist of it is involves approximately. 1,350 feet linear feet through the mixed cedar conifer forest and wetlands. Elevated platform elevated boardwalk that. That ends down at the edge of Manistee Lake for a platform or a deck. I think in the in the process of discussing these proposed. Plans with the project proponent, we've. Will always work to minimize resource impacts, and I think we've. Been working towards that and what we'll find out as we move through here is that there's been some reduction in in the. In the in the project as it's been proposed, I think we're looking only at one platform. Somewhat reduced size, not two platforms out at the lakes, lake edge. And some other other minor project modifications. That's typical of our process, once an application is received, we. We work to avoid and minimize resource impacts to the greatest extent possible, trying to get to what we would. Be a lot be more comfortable or allowed to be permitted without mitigation or without some other other mitigating measures. Besides creating wetlands or, you know, other alternative options. So next slide, I think that's. It's pretty much a description of the project, this is a the survey of the parcel as it meets Manistee Lake. So the area where the boardwalk meets the lake is is in, it's in blue. Up at the upper right of the of the drawing, I think that's it's described as. Parcel J up there, but it's it's the north. Northeast corner of this drawing. You can go to the next slide, Ryan, please. And I think we can open it up to question for the question and answer period if people want to engage and have specific questions. I think we can get into that.
Okay, thanks, Joey, I thanks for that presentation, just a couple of things on asking questions, you know, like. I guess had mentioned in the question and answer box, you feel free to type your question in. Or you can click your virtual hands at the bottom of the screen to raise your hand in Zoom. And we will call on you, we'll take turns kind of going in between the the hands and the. Q and a box, and then if you're listening on the phone, you can still ask a question. You just have to type pound two on your phone and that'll raise your virtual hand. And then we'll call on you, and I should mention, if you have your hand raised, what we'll do is unmute you on our end, then you'll be able to unmute yourself. If you're on the phone, I believe you'll get a prompt. And then. We'll go from there. Also, we're only going to go about to about 6:30 with the question and answer. Or until we run out of questions, we want to make sure we have plenty of time for everyone. To make a comment, an official comment on this project. So with that, I'm going to go ahead and start with the question and answer box, and there's already. A lot of questions in here, if you asked multiple questions. And probably I'm going to bounce kind of back and forth between different people to try to give everybody a chance to answer. Or ask at least a question, so. First one on here, and I'm the direct these to to you, Joe. So the application says lumber and posts needed for the project will be produced over time from cut trees in the wetlands. The applicant information says they will use no heavy equipment in the aspect of the project. So how will trees removed from the wetland be moved to where they need to be processed? The application also indicated that if more lumber was needed than removed to the site, it would be purchased. Will that be treated or untreated lumber and will Eagle exercise oversight to make sure department guidelines for use of treated lumber will be followed if used?
Yeah, so the state of Michigan Environment, Great Lakes and Energy does not regulate the cutting of vegetation. So if you own the, and this goes back to lumber law from, you know, historic times where if you own the property, you own the vegetation on the property. So unless there's some local ordinance that has, you know, tree protections and. Something of that nature, which I don't think there is in this in this region, maybe in Grand Traverse, in Traverse City, there are some in Oakland County. Those are the only areas that I'm aware of, I don't believe Calcasca County has has any. So if you own the property, you can cut the trees. The our regulations would only become involved if you were dredging, whereas pulling the root ball could be described as a dredge operation. So if the tree is cut at the ground surface, we don't have have much to say about that. Bringing lumber in would be almost anticipated as part of a project of this nature. So elevated boardwalk, you know, you'd probably you would want to build that out of treated lumber. But yeah, we would certainly be following any and all water quality requirements for materials that would be brought in. But as as far as our oversight of the actual construction goes. This project really has very minimal. Environmental concern regarding materials, it's more of a footprint question. And avoiding and minimizing any any wetlands to the greatest extent possible. I don't know, Erin, do you have any thoughts on that?
Uh, no, I I think you hit the nail on the head, Joe.
Thank you both, and thanks for the question, we're going to go to a raised hand now, John Vella, we're going to go ahead and unmute you. And then you can ask your question, looks like you're muted, Aaron, you can unmute yourself.
So I live on Manistee Lake 4381 East Shore Drive. Couple times a year, I'll take my kayak back there. Up and down the creek, I'm really curious, how do you define the water edge? To get to the creek, you gotta go through lily pads, you gotta go through reeds and then wooded wetlands. I don't have an issue with the request on the boardwalk, the removable dock, the 20 by 20 platforms. But what I really don't want to see is the platforms built out into what I would consider the lily pads or the reeds, so how do you define water's edge?
I, that's a good, it's a good question, because in in an area where you've got wetlands. It's a very much of a transitional area and there's not likely a hard line, if you, there's probably someplace on the lake you can go. I would imagine the southern edge of the lake where the boat launch, public launches. You would be able to go and define an ordinary high watermark, that's how the regulatory edge of the state would. Would be defined, so an area that's got a defined bank with a with a with a different type of a bed material or a different. Different material at that shoreline. It's not necessarily the same elevation every year, but it is it is defined within the regulations at this wetland area. You know, you, we probably could not go out there and point to an actual line that is an ordinary high watermark, just because of the nature of it being. A transitional wetland area, so. And I don't know that that's important or critical for the decision making here. The fact of the matter is, the edge of the lake here is probably also lake and wetland both. So we would, we're covering them both as far as our authorities and our and our laws, so we're going to regulate it both under Part 301. In the Lakes and Streams Protection. And Part 303 Wetlands Protection, and in the science that goes behind that would would line well up with that, there is a zone. Where areas are, you know, shallow enough to grow rooted vegetation to the surface. But still where, you know, it could be defined as lake. So I think that's what you what we're what you're describing here. You know, typically. We we would maybe allow a small platform, a deck or a dock. You know, if you own property on a lake, you have a right, you have, there's a riparian right to access that, whether that that right. Can be exercised is balanced with the public trust impact, so. That's that's our burden to do, that that exercises to see if if. If it's reasonable to. To implement construction here. That's proposed. In order to access this lake frontage, typically you don't need a permit to put seasonal, one seasonal dock in to access boatable water. So if if the project proponent here wants to do a seasonal dock, they don't need our permit to do that. I think the issue out here is this is such a a very wet wooded wetland, they need to have some boardwalk or would argue they need to have. Some type of boardwalk in order to get to. Get to be able to even use a seasonal dock out here. I don't know, I'm not sure if that answers your question, I can talk about wetlands all day.
So will Eagle be out there and make sure that whatever platform is built is back into the. Wooded area versus the lily pads and the reeds?
Well, if you mean will be, will, we're not like a. Like say an M dot inspector who's out on the highway while they're laying down asphalt, taking samples to. You know, to determine its proper engineering material, we don't have that kind of staff, we do. Do a certain amount of compliance inspections, so. I couldn't guarantee you that we're going to be here while they're constructing. But you know, they are required to build, if a permit were issued out here, they're required to build to the standards and the dimensions of that permit. And if they're not, then you know, there's consequences to that.
Thank you. Yes, something, Erin?
Yeah, I just wanted to add that the applicant is proposing keeping a tag alder. 12 foot buffer between the platforms and the lake guys.
Yeah, thanks for that, thanks for the additional info, Erin. I'm going to go to the questions that were typed in, and there's a couple, couple people who have typed this question in, so I'd like to make sure it gets answered. Has there been an environmental impact study?
No, and there typically wouldn't be, we don't typically do that for especially for, you know, this, I would describe this as a single family residential project. And and that's just not something that we would typically do as as far as. As that goes, if it came to a larger project, we would, we'd probably direct a project proponent to provide something to us from a. An environmental consultant, but that that seems like a different scale of project than we're talking about here.
And I'm going to tag on to that, Joe, and then just a kind of related question. And the question is, what will the impact be to the eagles? So I'm not sure if you want to, if there's anything you can say about wildlife.
So is there, there may be nesting eagles in the area or something of that nature, eagles are not. You know, they're not considered threatened and endangered any any longer, there used to be. A requirement for a buffer around an eagle's nest, I don't think that's in play here. We'd certainly be interested in knowing, and that's why we do these public hearings is because, you know, if there's. You know, wildlife that you as members of the public and users of this resource, people around. Manistee Lake know this resource better than we do, we don't live out here, we certainly are members of the community. But Erin and I don't, you know, we don't drive by here every day. So that's the benefit of this hearing and why we're here to, you know, to get your input, that's the type of, you know. Substantive input that that can really help us make a decision and help influence project planning and project implementation. So I think I'm hopeful that answers your question.
Yeah, I think I think it does, yeah, thanks for that, Joe, and thanks for writing the question, and there's one one on here that I just want to, I think I can answer. So the question is, would we read our letter that we submitted? Now or in later time? So just to clarify, if you have a question, we're going to address that now, but in a few minutes, once we get through this Q and A session. If you have something that you want to read off or make a comment. At the hearing, we'll get, that's going to be a separate opportunity for you, so hold on, if you need to make a statement, if you have a question, that's. This is the time for questions related to the project or the application, so with that, I think I'm going to go back to a raised hands and. Carolyn Phillips is who I have next up, so Carolyn, we're going to unmute you in our, and it looks like. Okay, it looks like you're muted, you can go ahead and ask your question.
Hi, hi folks, thank you very much for conducting this public hearing. I am a full-time resident of the Manistee Lake area. And I I have several questions, I'm think a couple of them have been answered. I guess our primary concern among discussions with friends and neighbors in our our neighborhood is. This project has been identified in your in the applicant's supplemental as a private residence project type. Will this be a full-time residential home on the upland? We have concerns that this may be a preliminary type project toward a more commercial operation. In light of the applicant's background in forestry and forest recreation and rustic camping. Has the applicant disclosed or are they willing to share with us what their long-term plans are about this project? Is this boardwalk some type of a preliminary? Effort to establish a commercial operation such as a campground, RV park? Or other recreational commercial use? Thank you for taking my question.
Yeah, I can take a stab at that, I don't know, and Erin, you might think while I while I talk about. While I speak, just because you've had more direct interaction with the project proponents and and having more conversations directly with them, but. It seems to me that any law, you know, we have not, to to straightforwardly answer your question. We've, I have not heard of any long-term planning for any such larger scale. You know, larger scale proposals or larger scale impacts. We are certainly, as a regulatory agency, we guard against the sort of piecemealing approach, right? We see it all the time, and I'm not suggesting that's what's being proposed here. But we see all the time people come in with a proposal, I just need a seawall, or I just need a roadway. And then, you know, three years later, now I need a building pad or five building pads and and. We really are interested in our in our guidance and our implementation of the statute. Is is we seek out a complete and total project proposal as soon as an applicant knows. Maybe the applicant doesn't know what they're going to do 10 years down the road, and that certainly is a reasonable conclusion here. The problem they're going to have is you've already had one bite at the apple if we are allowed, if we are able to permit, you know, this boardwalk. So that's going to be in our records and we're going to be aware of that, and it will, it will have, you know. An amount of wetland impact that's that's documented. That will not go away, so it'll be cumulative. And we can waive wetland mitigation beyond a third of an acre, but once you go over a third of an acre, you have to, you would have to mitigate, in other words, construct compensatory mitig. Compensatory wetland mitigation. That's the problem out here is there's already enough wetland, right, or not the problem, the benefit depending on which. Side of the argument you're on or whether you like wetlands or not, so. It's it's hard for me to envision a large. I don't know, a large campground out here, this is, you know. This is an extensive extensive forested wetland complex, so. All the wetland impacts out here would be would likely require permits, they can cut vegetation as as a forester, they could cut all the. You know, all the all the trees off this, to me, that wouldn't be really smart or or preferable just because of my personal aesthetics, but maybe, you know. The owner prefers that, that doesn't mean that they're going to be allowed to fill the, you know, to fill for camping camping pads or. You know, access roads or things like that nature, so to me, it seems difficult. And that's just my sort of high level assessment of the of the property, this is a very wet parcel of property with pretty clearly defined wetland borders. If you look at those areas, those are areas that are going to, it would be. Exceedingly challenging to to impact, to issue a permit for.
Yeah, um, I would, I would. I I haven't received any word from the applicants that they're planning any future wetland impacts and. Within the permit application itself, they applied for the boardwalk on both parcels of property that they own, both the northern and southern portion. Those are the only wetland impacts they're proposing at this time, that's not to say they won't in the future, but. Any future work, there is, there is a lot of upland, while there is a large wetland within their property, there there are upland areas as well. And part of our process would be for any future proposals, especially for building. We would, we would ask them to utilize the upland first. And any building on upland that they're doing wouldn't necessarily require a permit from our office.
Thank you both for the answer to the question, thank you Carolyn for asking it. We're getting close to time, but there's one more on here, I want to make sure, I mean, there's a lot of questions on here, but I want to try at least get to one more. We're getting close to time, but there's one more on here. I want to make sure. I mean, there's a lot of questions on here, but I wanna I'm try at least get to one more. Um, and what this is, given the boardwalk and platforms would be permanent non-removable structures, um, they would be setback from the lake shoreline, a minimum of sixty foot, and this says in parentheses, current Cold Springs Township requirement for any new construction. Is this correct? I'm not sure if you can speak to what the township requirement is or anything about this sixty foot.
Um, I don't, I don't know if that applies to a um to an access um an access walkway or a or a platform. I don't know, Erin, do you have any indication that that the township, has the township offered any input on that as far as setback go goes?
I I have not spoken with the township about specific setbacks. And and if those would apply to a boardwalk and platform.
Okay.
Uh, we would, we would seek out the that information before any permit decisions were made. We would, we wouldn't issue a permit under the over the objection of the township without some type of uh resolution.
Gotcha. Okay, yeah, thanks, Joe and Erin. Um, I think at this point, there are still a lot of hands raised and uh a lot of questions on here. Unfortunately, we're gonna have to move on to the hearing portion uh of tonight's public hearing uh to give people time to make their statements. So we're gonna go ahead and move on to that portion. Thank you for those of you who asked questions. Uh, and for those of you, uh, Joe and Erin, uh, who answered them. So with that, um, before we move on to that, though, uh, I wanna go over some other ways to make an official comment uh for the record for this. In case you don't want to make a statement tonight, there are other ways that you can make your comment uh through our My Waters uh system uh at this address, uh, mywaters.dq.state.m i.us. I'm not gonna read this all off. Um but I believe Matt's gonna try to put this, it's happening in the background into the chat. So we'll try to get this link in there. And then, Joe, I'm assuming this link is ex- was accessible um in the public notice for this hearing as well. And then also by mail uh at Eagle, and I will read this off for anybody who's on the phone. If you want to uh make a um or send in a com- unofficial comment, you can do that by mail at Eagle Water Resources Division, Gaylord District Office. That's twenty-one hundred M thirty-two Gaylord, Michigan, four nine seven three five. And the comment period after this public hearing will be open for ten days, which is January twenty-ninth. All right, it looks like uh that link is now in the chat uh for anybody who would like to use it. But with that, we're gonna go ahead and kick off the public hearing portion of tonight's hearing. So uh I'd like to invite Joe to read the hearing statement to get it started.
Yeah, thanks, Ryan. Make sure I click in the right spot. Sorry, bear with me. Old guy, computer issues. So um just know this is a bit of a stilted process, right? And I'll kind of describe that as I get through the the hearing statement. This is a a this is the formal portion of the public hearing. And it's a little bit stilted where we are not gonna answer questions at this point. This is your opportunity to provide comments on the record. So this is uh the Michigan Department of Environment and Environment, Great Lakes and Energy Water Resources Division, Bryce Metcalf Work Forest Recreation LLC, Eagle Submission Number HPC three A G B A K B T V. Hearing date, January nineteenth, twenty-twenty-two. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joseph Haas. You can call me Joe. And I am the district supervisor for Water Resources Unit in Cadillac and Gaylord in the Water Resources Division of the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy. I'll be serving as the hearing officer for this hearing on Eagle, on Eagle Submission Number HPC three A G V A K B T V. With me tonight is Aaron Emmington, Environmental Qual- Environmental Quality Analyst for Water Resources Division with the Gaylord District Office. The public hearing agenda is to describe background information about why we're here tonight, the purpose of the hearing, and how your comments will be used. Following that, I'll outline procedures under which we'll take your comments. And then I will describe what will happen after tonight's hearing. It will then be time for you to provide the comments. We can, we will spend the remainder of the time tonight listening to your comments. At the end of the hearing, I will read the closing statement. By way of background information, the Water Resources Division is responsible for administering a variety of programs to help protect inland lakes and streams, wetlands, flood plains, sand dunes, and great lakes. These programs regulate certain activities such as dredging or filling a lake, stream, or wetland, constructing a dam, constructing a marina, placing shore protection or constructing docks and building in a designated critical sand dune area, building in a wetland, or building in a flood plain. The law governing these responsibilities is the Natural Resources and Environmental Protection Act of nineteen ninety-four, Public Act four fifty-one as amended. We're here tonight because Bryce Metcalf Forest Recreation, a limited liability corporation, has proposed to obtain a permit to construct boardwalk access within regulated wetlands, generally in two areas. At the north end of the property, the proposal involves approximately three hundred and seventy linear feet of boardwalk in an east and west orientation for access over wetland areas. To the south, in order to access Manistee Lake, the proposal involves constructing an elevated boardwalk in a general north and south orientation, approximately one thousand three hundred and fifty linear feet through a mixed conifer-forested wetlands, including constructing a deck platform immediately adjacent to the lakeshore. In order for a permit to be granted, Eagle must find that the proposed activities described in the public notice meet certain criteria set by Part three oh one in the Lakes and Streams Protection and Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one. In general, we must consider the effect of the proposed project on the stream and wetlands. When reviewing an application for permits under provisions of Part three oh one in Lakes and Streams, Eagle is charged to make the following considerations as required by Section three oh one oh six of Part three oh one. The department shall issue a permit if it finds the structure or project will not adversely affect public trust or riparian rights. The department shall not grant a permit if the proposed project or structure will unlawfully impair or destroy any of the waters or other natural resources of the state. When reviewing an application for a permit under the provisions of Part three oh three Wetlands Protection of Act four fifty-one, Eagle is charged to make the following indications as required by Section three oh three one one of Part three oh three. A permit for an activity listed in Section three oh three oh four shall not be approved unless the department determines that the issuance of a permit is in the public interest and that the permit is necessary to realize the benefits derived from the activity and that the activity is otherwise lawful. A permit shall not be issued unless it is shown that an unacceptable disruption will not result to the aquatic resources. A permit shall not be issued unless the applicant also shows either of the following. The proposed activity is primarily dependent upon being located in the wetland and a feasible and prudent alternative does not exist. The purpose of tonight's hearing is to give anyone interested in the proposed project an opportunity to provide information that Eagle can use in making the decision whether or not to issue a permit. Please recognize that Eagle can only use the information you provide if it relates to the criteria that Eagle must use in making a decision. Some of you may simply want to express your support or opposition to the project. We're happy to make note of your position, but please understand that Eagle is by law not allowed to base our decision on whether or not there's widespread support or opposition to the project. In a minute, I'll outline the procedure we'll use for taking your comments. But before I do that, I need to mention that the notice of this hearing was published in the Record Eagle and on Eagle's online calendar. As we discussed at the beginning of the information session, if you have a comment to provide, raise your hand in the Zoom toolbar to ensure that the hearing is conducted in a fair manner. We'll follow these steps. We'll call on those who have indicated in their registration that they would like to speak. After that, we'll call on those that have raised their hand in the Zoom toolbar. As a reminder, if you're participating in this hearing via telephone, follow the directions of the moderator on how to identify that you would like to make a comment. You can also submit your comments to Eagle via our My Waters database through email or through the US mail, as was previously uh discussed. When all the comments have been completed, we'll ask if anyone else would like to make a statement. When your name is called, your microphone will be unmuted. As you begin your comments, please state your name and any group or association you may represent. Everyone will be given four minutes to make comments. We'll indicate to you when you have a minute left. Please begin wrapping up your comments and end within allotted time. If need be, we will indicate when your time has ended. I ask that we all be courteous and respectful to one another tonight. Please also recognize that Eagle staff is here tonight to provide a fair opportunity for you to express your comments on the proposed project and to listen to those comments. This hearing is being recorded, and your comments will be a part of the information Eagle will consider in making its decision on whether or not to issue a permit on the proposed project. Public comment period for this public hearing is open for ten days from today, ending on the twenty-ninth of January, twenty-twenty-two. Additional information and comments submitted in writing during this ten-day public comment period will be considered in Eagle's decision. Following the close of the public comment period, Eagle will make a decision to either issue a permit for the proposed project or modify the project or send a letter of denial. You may find out what the decision is by checking the Eagle My Waters website and searching for the application number. Again, that application number is H P C three A G V A K B T V. Thank you for your attention. We'll begin calling the names of those who have indicated they would like to make a statement. Think it's up to you from here, Ryan.
Yep, thanks, Joe. Thanks for reading that. As Joe had mentioned, I I just want to summarize this one more time. When you registered, you had a chance to indicate if you wanted to make a comment or not. I have that list here. I'm just gonna go through uh the people who indicated on the list in order of registration. Um, one by one, I'll call your name, and then I'll also call the person who's next to give you a second so that you know you're you're up next. Um, there are seven people on this list, so I'm gonna go through the list that I have. Uh, you'll have that four minutes to make your comment, and uh you may state your name and who you're associated with, if you'd like. And then, uh, once we're through this list, uh, we're gonna go to the raised hands. So please raise your hand um if you want to make a comment. Um, and you're not on this list. Um, but you can do that and at any time. And then if you're on the phone, you can hit pound two, and that will also raise your hand in Zoom. So we're just gonna go through this list and then go through the raised hands uh one at a time. So with that, we're gonna go ahead and get started. And the first person uh on my list is Kimberly Burkhart. So Kimberly, we're gonna go ahead and unmute you so that you can make your comment. Looks like you're unmuted on our end, Kimberly. You just think you can unmute yourself. All right, you should be good to go. You go ahead and start making your comment.
Yes, Kimberly and Gary Burkhart. We live on Timberline, which is the north end of the lake. We have several areas of concern and regards with the granting of this application. First and foremost is that this plot of land is a virtual, a very vital wetland for the Manistee Lake and surrounding areas. As per the comment in the document produced by the Michigan Department of Natural Resources, Status of the Fishery Report from two thousand and eight under the Management Direction of Manistee Lake, and I quote, "Any Romanian riparian wetlands adjacent to Manistee Lake should be protected as they are crucial to the continued health of the lake's aquatic community. Future uh unwise riparian development and wetland loss may result in deterioration of the water quality in a uh aquatic habitat. Appropriate watershed management is necessary to sustain healthy biological communities, including fish and vertebrates and amphibians, reptiles, birds, and aquatic mammals." And that report was quoted from O'Neill and Sullier from two thousand and six. Second, the northernmost shore of the lake, which includes the wetland area in question, is the main source of water and water purification from Manistee Lake. Third, many birds, primarily bald eagles, feed and roost in that area as well as a wide variety of other creatures and species that rely on the quiet and sanct- sanctuary of this area on the lake. Fourth, the application is for an individual permit, which from the documents from the permitted categories for wetlands, inlands, lakes, and streams, great lakes, and flood plains is one of the higher levels of permits, which E E G L E defines as a, within the major projects, we feel we should undoubtedly present a a potential for negative impacts on the lake and its wetland areas and the overall health quality of the lake. The following concerns are about the scope of the project. If it's simply a need for a family to have access to a lake through a wetland area, why are they in need of such a scope of project? The application is asking for nearly two thousand feet of boardwalk and two twenty by twenty tw- decks near the lake. Wouldn't a small walkway with access to a dock give just as a good of access? The applicants knew this land was wetland when they purchased the land and that it would not be suitable for development. Our concern is that the applicant is being submitted with only a small vision of the future use land. They own many parcels that are to the north of the wetland area. The applicant owns these parcels, and we don't know what their future endeavors are. It may, their future endeavors may highly impact the area of the land through the wetland. This potential land use would put more undue stress on a valuable and fragile wetland. Manistee Lake already has many external strengths put on it. We have a large camp, Camp Tenuga, which begins, which brings in hundreds of additional people to our lake. There's also Township Park Sands Park, which allows hundreds of people to access this lake and drop their boats in the lake for hunt uh for fishing and so on, which additionally stresses our lake. And lastly, there are numerous public access points around the lake, which allow many people to come and use our lake to swim, picnic, fish, ice fish, et cetera, on the lake. All these add stresses to our lake.
Yeah, about one minute, Kimberly.
We're also terribly upset that this question and the timing of the application, the fact that most of the people around the lake are seasonal and don't even know of this uh hearing is a little disheartening. It would be nice to know that everyone, even the summer residents, could voice their opinions and be aware of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right, so next up is Keith Ganser. And then after Keith is Gaynor Gentilia. So Keith, uh, we're gonna go ahead and unmute you. All right, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. Keith, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and you can start your comment whenever you're ready.
Hi there. Uh, Keith Ganser, seventy-five oh eight Timberline Drive. I'm a full-time resident here. My main concern is what will it, what will the impact be since the inland waters that feed Manistee Lake are right on that property? Most of the water that comes into the lake flows from that inlet and flows out through the south end of the lake. My other concern is if he plans on doing this project, how long is this project gonna take? And is there an expiration date on the permit? My other concern is there's a lot of trees in that area, and it's a beautiful area up that way. What will be the impact if all the trees are gone? And it just looks like all the clear coating that goes on around here in Calcasas County. It could just be a a wasteland up that way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Keith. Okay, next is uh Gaynor Gentilia, followed by, and then after that is Mary Strivel. So let's see if we can find you. Uh, Gaynor. It looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can go ahead and uh make your comment whenever you're ready.
Hi, uh, Gaynor Gentilia Township Clerk. Um, we've, we've had lots of um phone calls and concerns from our residents regarding this permit. Um, but as a township clerk, my concern is is currently there isn't a building or any sort of building on that property. So my concern is why put a boardwalk in prior to building anything, building a structure? And again, the other concern is if it goes, if they, if they do some form of commercial, even, you know, rustic tent camping on the boardwalk itself, what impact does that have on our wetlands? And, and what impact will some of the clearing have on the lake itself? And will the township have any liability as far as trying to clean up the lake for, from any of, any of the, any of the parts of this project, both in the future? So I think as a township clerk, I'm just really concerned about what is the true purpose? If there currently isn't a building in place and what is the true purpose of having the boardwalk prior to building a structure? And that's the end of my comment.
Thank you for making the comment. All right, so next is Mary Strivel and then after Mary is Carolyn Phillips. So Mary Strivel, looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and start your comment whenever you're ready. It should be in your toolbar on the left-hand side that says, there should be a microphone that you click. That you should be able to unmute yourself. If not, you may need to select a different audio source, a carrot that's on the microphone as well. But what we'll do, Mary, is we'll, we'll move on and then we'll come back to you to see if you were able to unmute yourself. All right, so next up is Carolyn Phillips. And then after Carolyn, we'll go back to Mary. And then if Mary isn't there, Richard Delaney. So Carolyn, you can go ahead and, looks like you're unmuted. You can go ahead and start your comment whenever you're ready.
Hello again. Thank you for inviting me to make a comment. First, I want to echo the concerns expressed by commenter Burkhardt earlier today. I'm sorry, Carolyn Phillips, Manistee Lake resident and property owner of over 20 years. I want to echo the concerns expressed by commenter Burkhardt at the first of this hearing. I also want to echo the comment, the public comment made in writing by the Manistee Lake Fisheries, DNR Fisheries biologist Mark Tonello. Manistee Lake, the Manistee Lake Association has worked long and hard to protect and enhance the fishery of this lake. We are all aware that the creek adjacent, immediately adjacent, according to the south drawing boundary submitted by the applicant, it's hard to tell how far the platform, the two 400 square feet platforms are, but one appears to be immediately adjacent to the inlet creek discussed earlier. Is the construction of the platform immediately adjacent to the inlet creek going to impede the flow of the incoming water to Manistee Lake? That's a major concern to us. We've worked long and hard. I've worked personally on the fisheries project on this lake for 20 years and we're hopeful that that protection for that wetland will remain undeveloped, pristine land on this lake that hopefully can remain intact. Thank you for inviting us to comment. That's the end of my comment.
Thanks for the comment, Carolyn. All right, Mary Strivel, are you online, able to unmute yourself? All right, if not, there are other ways that you can make a comment that we've already talked about. We will go through those again in case you're having difficulties with your equipment at home. So next, we will go to Richard Delaney. And then after Richard, Sid Friedman. So Richard, looks like you're unmuted on our end and you're in, so you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Great, thank you, Ryan. I am a longtime resident of Calcasas. I live at 4801 East Shore Drive and a permanent resident. I'm also a township trustee for Cold Springs Township. I have heard many concerns expressed by our residents about this possible permit application. I haven't heard any positive yet. Nearly all of them have been negative with, with extreme concern over the location, the impact on Manistee Lake, the ecosystem. And I will just again echo what I think Kim Burkhardt did a great job summarizing many concerns that I have heard. In addition to that, I will also just say that the December 6th, 2021 memo from Mark Tonello of the DNR Fisheries Division to Aaron Emmington, who's on this call, I thought that was a very concise description of the threats to Manistee Lake. Mark cites that the Manistee Lake ecosystem should be afforded the utmost environmental protection. Much of the Manistee Lake shoreline has been previously filled in and destroyed. So he goes on to say that the remaining riparian wetlands adjacent to Manistee Lake should be protected and considered critical to the continued health of the lake's aquatic community. And Mark recommends that the permit application be denied. And I, I totally agree with his, his final statement that says, if the applicant desires a shoreline where traditional lakefront activities can be conducted, perhaps purchasing a shoreline without wetlands would be a better alternative. I don't think it can be said any better than that. There are opportunities out there that the applicant could enjoy Manistee Lake. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for, for doing this public hearing.
Thanks for making the comment, Richard. Right, so the last on my list over here is Sid Friedman. And then we're going to start going to the raised hands. So if you're listening in and would like to make a comment and haven't made one yet, please raise your hand. Everybody have one, a chance to make a comment. So Sid, it looks like you're unmuted. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate you guys putting this together. Sid Friedman, Camp Tenuga, six eight seven four, Camp Tenuga Road. Been part of Camp Tenuga. This will be our 70th, that's seven zero, summers on Manistee Lake. We've certainly seen a lot of development, mostly in a positive light. It is a little bit concerning to see this proposal specifically, you know, concerns for many of the people that I've talked to that haven't had an opportunity to speak or make comments. You know, concerns about a precedent being set here with, you know, the boardwalk and future proposals, you know, from people that have some direct access to the lake that are, that are really this far away from the actual shoreline. As echoing some of the sentiments, it's some of the comments that have been made in terms of, you know, the, the long-term motives. You know, when you look at the property that was shown early in the presentation, doesn't take a rocket scientist to see not necessarily the wetlands that are being proposed, but the development, the uplands. Wouldn't take a whole lot to develop that property and use the boardwalk that is being proposed. Not further development to the wetlands as the comments were made by Aaron and Joe, but the land being developed north of that to use this boardwalk specifically. We do have a lot of allegiance to the eagles and though it was mentioned that they are no longer an endangered species, the bald and golden eagles are still protected by multiple federal laws. And those of you that have not had the privilege, we have seen these eagles flourish for my lifetime. They definitely nest on that property. There is a specific tree that I've seen personally, and I'm sure many people feel the same way, that is in this proposed area and should be addressed. Having walked through that wetlands myself, sometimes up to my neck, I'm concerned about how deep those boardwalk posts are going to have to go. I can't imagine that those are going to hold up in the winter time over the years and.
You have about one minute left, Sid.
I have questions about the ongoing maintenance. Has the Asabel Institute been involved? They've been doing probably more studies on the lake than anybody. I'm just curious if they've been involved. And if, if this permit is issued, are there going to be restrictions of the use of this boardwalk besides this single-family permit? That is going to be the hypothetical users. Thank you very much and I appreciate you putting this together.
Yeah, thanks for your comments, Sid. And it looks like we actually, we're going to go back to Mary Strivel. It looks like we have more than one on, on our list in Zoom, so we're going to unmute both of them and then Mary, we'll see if you can unmute yourself. Looks like you're muted, Mary. We got it to work. Great.
Thank you.
Make your comment whenever you're ready.
I'm really concerned that there has been no environmental impact study. How, how large of an area do we have to have in order to have a study like this done? People have already commented about our water source, the fishing, the huge amount of other groups that come to this lake, other than the property owners. I am a property owner of over 30 years and I kayak there all the time. The animals, the turtles, the beavers, the herons, the eagles will all be impacted by this. And I am concerned that these people are going to build a campground or something like that. And I still feel the government should put, do an environmental impact study. I mean, how big does it have to be to get one? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment. All right, next I have Anne Heron. And then after that, I have a phone caller, ending in three, four, two, eight. So Anne, we're going to go ahead and unmute you on our end. All right, it looks like you're unmuted. You can go ahead and start to make a.
I'm Anne Heron and I have a home on Manistee Lake of a beach street and very concerned for over the years. My major concern is as they put the boardwalk in, how much clear cutting are they going to have to do and how will that affect our lake? Seeing that the inlet is up there, we need the trees and the water to clean the, clean the lake. It's very important for our fishing and just for all the impact of not just the eagles, but the loons and all the animals that we just enjoy throughout the year. I also concerned, excuse me, Sid has said, why do we have to put a boardwalk right through the wetland that keeps this lake clean? And what is that going to mean for the impact of the rest of that property? If they, if they just want a dock, they could put it in at the, where it's not going to affect so much. But I have major concern that they have bigger ideas as far as what they're going to use this area for. And as, as you start putting more and more people on that boardwalk and finding the impact to the environment, that we are going to have grave concerns to the lake. Thank you.
No, thanks for your comment. All right, so next up we have wireless caller or phone caller ending in three, four, two, eight. It looks like you're unmuted on our end and you should be able to unmute yourself. I believe you receive a prompt if you're listening in. Oh, and it looks like you are unmuted caller.
This is S E faction. I'm a full-time resident at the Hayden Arbor. My question was if this is a personal use type of, if this is a personal use type area, why do we need such an elaborate walk system? And why is it so high, four feet off the, four feet high? In fall time, when the leaves fall off or in the spring, this platform is going to be right, you know, on the view of everything. And it's gonna mess up the aesthetic of the, the view of the lake. Thank you.
Now, thank you for your comment. All right, our next, next person up is Seth Phillips. And then after Seth, it's going to be Kathleen Lindsay. So Seth, it looks like you are unmuted and you can go ahead.
Thank you, Ryan. Yes, my name is Seth Phillips. I am the Calcasas County Drain Commissioner, 20-year resident here on Manistee Lake, longtime member and officer in the Manistee Lake Association and a member of the Manistee Lake Improvement Board. First of all, I want to make sure it's clear that we have a very engaged community on this lake. And we all have been involved in a great deal of work of projects of various kinds to enhance the fishery in the lake and protect the water quality of this lake. As Mark Tonello, DNR Fisheries Division pointed out, the area in question here is the last remaining unspoiled wetland area on this lake. Manistee Lake is shallow. It's highly sensitive to negative impacts. And while the individual nature of this project doesn't concern me as much, the risk of the slippery slope, the death by a thousand cuts, once things start happening in those wetlands, what happens next is what concerns me greatly. I hope you've noticed that there are a number of local elected officials on this meeting who have expressed their concerns about this. And I know we all reflect a much larger community of concerns from people that we've talked to. And I fully understand the property owner's desire to enjoy the lake the same way the rest of us do. But there are a lot of issues pertaining to their proposal that concern all of us. And it isn't about their desire to, to use the lake. It's about our concerns about protecting this lake for the future. And that's the emphasis that I would hope Eagle would focus on in making its permit decision. Other than that, I would like to echo many of the comments you heard from many of my friends and neighbors on this property, who I think have voiced well the level of concern that we all have about this. And I hope, I would hope that the proposers of this project could rethink what they'd like to do and come up with a better alternative. Thank you for taking my comment.
Yeah, thank you for your comments, Seth. Next up is Kathleen Lindsay. Kathleen, we will unmute you. All right, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can go ahead and unmute yourself, make a comment whenever you're ready. All right, it looks like you are unmuted.
I thank you for your time and effort tonight. I am a homeowner on Manistee Lake and have been on that lake actually for 64, since 1964. So I've seen a lot of history there. I have some concerns. My limited knowledge tells me that that woodland near toward the upland is probably a succession forest, which is part of the growth developmental aspect of that area of land and necessary for the area in front of. and necessary for the area in front of it to develop. Secondly, um, as a person who owns property on the lake, we have had several developmental kinds of, um, commercial, um, endeavors take hold behind us in the form of VRBO rentals, and we've had no say in that development, which I understand. But of course, we are concerned about those kinds of things being established on the upland, uh, up along Cunningham Road perhaps, where they could access and would use all of this, um, boardwalk platform area for something like kayak rental, canoe rental. Um, and I know that the permit at this point is just discussing the development they can put into the wetland area. But again, um, there are future things, and I think you kind of referenced that earlier on when you were talking about having seen things happen in, um, oh, like, you know, i- in stages, and sooner or later, it develops into some kind of a large commercial thing. I would add one other thing. I directly emailed both of these owners, um, oh, before the holiday, um, asking them, what is this? Is this commercial or is this personal? Neither one responded to me, and so I really doubt that they're either upfront, straightforward, or being honest about what the possibility for development would be here. The lake was logged many, many, many years ago. Uh, and I know that that can have, uh, an effect on the bottom of the lake also. And so I have some concerns about all the potential. Um, and I really find it hard to believe that this kind of investment does not have some kind of a commercial aspect to it that will harm the lake. Thank you for your consideration. Done.
Thanks for your comment. Uh, is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? And so just as a reminder, if you're still on the phone and haven't made one yet, you can, um, if you're on the phone, you can select pound two, it'll raise your virtual hand in Zoom, or you can hit the raise hand icon in your Zoom toolbar if you're online with us. Um, I'll give it just another couple seconds in case there's anybody who wants to make a comment. It looks like I have a couple more that popped on. Uh, we have, uh, Keith Ganser, and then, uh, followed by, it'll be Sandra Groco-Groco. So Keith, we're gonna go ahead and unmute you and give you a chance to make your comments. Looks like you're unmuted on, on our end, Keith. You can go ahead and unmute yourself and-
Go ahead. Hi, yes, this is Keith's wife Pam Ganser, and I also am a full-time resident now on Timberline. And we have been part of the lake property owners ourselves for over twenty years. What's involved with what happens around this lake is we have association meetings that we have been part of for all those years. We attend each and every meeting. My husband serves on the board of the Manistee Lake Association. And we have spent immeasurable amounts of time on the education, learning about the fragile ecosystem of the lake fisheries. We've looked at water quality. We look at lake height. We look, you know, we know, you know, we're, we're learning this, and we've learned from, um, all kinds of guest speakers, the Asabel Institute. We've had, um, the professor from University of Michigan. We have worked with Mark Tonello. We have worked with, uh, recently, the conservation department, where they're talking about natural lake shore, shoreline, um, development, the restoration, protecting the lake shore itself and the, the impact that that has. So, and this is the last area of the lake, and we just really have a hard time with the idea of putting a boardwalk in this area, not a dock. And some of the wording, when they talk about a boardwalk, says, so people who need to pass by one another. Well, if you're just referring to family members, you're not referring to people. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, uh, and that does bring up a good point. If, if there's anybody in your household who would like to make a comment, it's, uh, every person should have an opportunity to make a comment, not necessarily each login. So just wanted to make that point. Um, and so next up is Sandra Groco. Sandra, looks like you're muted on our end. And you can go ahead and start whenever you're ready.
Hi, my name is Sandy, and I live on East Shore Road. I have been coming to Manistee Lake since about nineteen fifty-five, as a very little girl, of course. And I just want to state that I am in agreement with what everyone's comments are here this evening. But also, a thing that popped into my mind is, should there be this boardwalk built? Are these people building it themselves, or will they be bringing in a crew of workers to do it? Thank you for hearing me out.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Sandy. Is there anybody else who would like to make a comment? Yeah, if you're on the phone, pound two, um, or you can select, raise your hand in Zoom. Just one or two more seconds, give you a chance. All right, it looks like Darren Moore just raised, uh, his hand. So Darren, we're gonna unmute you, and then you'll be able to make your comment. All right, looks like you can go ahead and start when you're ready.
All right, thanks for having me. Uh, we built our home on Hidden Harbor Drive in nineteen eighty-eight. It's a vacation home, but we're there often. Um, I don't agree with this permit, and the reason being is, um, we, it took us ten years to build our garage next to our home, um, on upland, but it was next to a wetland. Um, eventually, ten years later in two thousand, we were able to build our garage, but it was four feet shorter and smaller than what we wanted. Why should somebody be able to build over a thousand feet directly through wetlands that really filter our lake? And, and that's just been my problem throughout this whole thing, and I don't, again, I don't agree with this permit. So, thank you. Appreciate you having me.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Darren. All right, uh, while we're waiting, uh, another couple seconds to see if anybody else wants to make a comment, uh, just wanna let you know, we are gonna identify, uh, again, wait other ways to make a comment, uh, that we already went through, through my waters and that mailing address. And then we're also gonna put some contact information up on your screen if anybody has additional questions. So that'll be coming up here a little bit later. Um, it looks like we have another hand raised. Uh, Robert, uh, Benzetti. Robert, we're gonna go ahead and unmute you. Uh, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and make your comment.
Yeah, it seems rather elementary that two twenty-by-twenty platforms is for a single-family residence. It's obvious that somebody's planning on developing something here, but I don't know that you guys can do anything about it because it doesn't affect the water flow or the wetlands or anything like that. So we're gonna have to take this up with the township building permits or something. I, that's, I just don't know what to do, but it sounds like we're gonna end up with a lake with a ton of fork boats running around. That's it.
Thanks for your comment, Robert. All right, uh, Keith Ganser has, uh, his hand raised again. We're gonna go ahead and unmute you. Do you have another person who would like to make a comment? Keith?
I've just got one more, more. I've got one more comment here.
Um, we're, we're gonna have to, it's one comment per person, so if you have additional comments, what we'll do is we'll put the, uh, information on the screen, uh, here at the end, and you'll be able to send in additional comments.
Well, let me ask you just one question here. Is this going to set a, a precedence for future development at the north end of the lake? And if so, what would, what would that do to that corner of the lake?
Okay, this is still the public hearing portion, Keith, so we're gonna have to move on. Um, and I'll show you that information, uh, that'll be on your screen here coming up. So is there anybody else who has not made a comment yet who would like to make a comment for the record? Go ahead, again, raise your virtual hand in Zoom, or you can select pound two. All right, we've got Danielle, uh, MC. So Danielle, we're gonna go ahead and, uh, unmute you, and you can make your comment. Looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can go ahead and start when you're ready.
Um, thank you. Uh, my husband and I just want to go on the record to say that we are in full support of all of the elected officials and people who have serious concerns about the development of the north side of the lake um, as a business developer, and we have also been, um, members of the association since we moved up to the lake. We lived there about fifty percent of the time, about four years. Uh, we joined the association right away. But as business developers, we both understand, um, the opening, uh, kind of bugle call of, of this type of development. This is certainly not, um, private family. A boardwalk of this size is definitely meant for a far more foot traffic. Um, and we would like to go on the record to say that, you know, a, a community in development and understanding of each other is really the most beneficial. So, you know, before this would go forward, I would very much urge that, you know, the people who are, are obviously doing this for, you know, not in nefarious reasons, but reasons that are right to them, I think that their involvement in the actual Manistee Lake Association and these elected officials and the people who care about the lake would be extremely beneficial to understanding, uh, why the opposition is so strong. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Danielle. Are there any other comments out there? You can actually raise, you raise your hand at any time and make a comment. While this portion of the hearing is still going, so we're gonna give it another couple seconds to see if there's any, anybody else who would like to make a comment. So going once, going twice. All right, so with that, uh, Joe, uh, I'd like to invite you to, uh, read the closing statement tonight.
Thank you. I just have to find the, the unmute button here. Um, thanks to, thanks to everyone for your participation, um, your cooperation. I think we heard some very intelligent, well-thought-out comments. We appreciate, uh, greatly appreciate your interest in this proposed project, um, and taking the time to be here tonight. As indicated at the beginning of the hearing, you can submit additional written comments until the twenty-ninth of January, to the end of the month. Following the close of this public comment period, we will review and consider, um, all the comments that were received and make a decision on permitting the proposal. Permitting, issuing, modifying, denying is, uh, really are the options, right? Just to remind those that might still want to submit a comment, you can submit comments via my waters or our online database, uh, through an email to, uh, Aaron or myself, or through the US Postal Service. Again, thanks for being here. Thanks for taking your time. Uh, your comments are appreciated. It's an important part of this process. A decision has not been made yet. Um, we will consider your comments, and a decision will follow. The hearing is now closed. Thank you again for your time.
I thank you for reading that, Joe. Um, as Joe mentioned, I've got the other ways to submit a comment, uh, up on your screen. Against, it's through my water system. The link is in the chat. Um, and then by mail to Eagle Water Resources Division, Gaylord District Office, two, one, zero, zero, M thirty-two, Gaylord, Michigan, four, nine, seven, three, five. So you can submit them in writing with that. And then, as, uh, Joe mentioned, um, comment period is, uh, will be open for ten days. And then I know we didn't get through all the questions that we had, so if you have, uh, further questions, you can contact Aaron or Joe, and I'm gonna read these off for people on the phone. Uh, so Aaron Edmonton's contact information or phone number is nine, eight, nine, six, one, nine, eight, five, one, nine, and her email address is E M I N G T O N E at Michigan dot gov. And then Joe Haas, uh, his phone number is nine, eight, nine, three, three, zero, nine, two, five, zero. And his email is H A A S J one at Michigan dot gov. And so if you have additional follow-up questions, um, you can contact Aaron or Joe. And with that, um, Joe, did you have anything file you wanted to say before we, we end the hearing tonight?
No, not, no, just to be clear, nine, eight, nine, three, three, zero, nine, two, five, two. I think you said nine, two, five, zero, right? So nine, nine, two, five, two is my phone number. Emails, email comments are easier for us to handle, but feel free to call, have a conversation with Aaron or I. Um, you know, we, we are here, um, you know, we often discuss, you know, the, the jobs we do can be difficult, right? We're put in a situation or presented with an application, and we bring it forth, and it almost implies that we are on the side of a project proponent or against a project by, you know, out of hand. That's not necessarily true. We try to be agnostic as we, as we, as possible on these. Um, but we do live in the community. We're interested in having a conversation with you. If you've got an interest in speaking with us about, uh, about your thoughts, so, uh, feel free to reach out to us.
That's all I got. Yeah, thanks for that correction, Joe, and, uh, and for the clarification and for, uh, yeah, thanks, Joe and Aaron, for answering all the questions, being part of the hearing. And then thank you for everyone who, for participating in, in this process and asking those questions tonight. Uh, and with that, I hope you all have a great evening. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you.